All right, welcome. This Thursday, June 22nd at 6:00 PM, we were gathered here in Coventry 1 in 50th. City Hall, East Hampton, Massachusetts. This is the City Council Public Safety Committee. Owen's there at the chair. We have present here one of our members, Mr. Derby, Councilor Derby. I do not see Councilor Munier. President and Councilor Gomez, do you want to sit in for him? Or do you want...
I can't. That's how you do it. I'm the alternate.
Perfect. Well, we have our alternate and member and president of the city council. You're filling many roles. So first order of this, of today's meeting is approval of minutes from last meeting. I have minutes here from May 25th, 2023. Are there any questions or concerns about those minutes?
A second was taken off of this one.
Oh, I can...
We can do that.
Councilor Derby, do you mind?
I can do it.
Okay. I could probably summarize it afterwards. But that would be great. Okay, that was a good question.
I move to approve the minutes of May 25th.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Abstain.
We have a 2-0 with one abstention. Minutes approved. Next on our agenda is public speak. This is for items not otherwise on the agenda, for the public to weigh in on, make any statements. Remember that the councillors here cannot respond. Are there any comments from the public? Seeing none. Sorry, I'm switching between multiple screens. We have a few items on our new business docket here. And the first that I would like to discuss is the proposal by Councilor Gomez, requesting several parking amendments in downtown. Prior to doing so, are there any members of the public here who want to speak to that? About the parking?
Oh, yeah. I think...
Okay.
Just do.
Okay. Well, then, without further ado, I also see we have the planner here. But first, I'll turn it over to you, Councilor Gomez, just to introduce this. And then we can talk to other stakeholders.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I just want to say thank you to Jeff that he helped me with this. After talking to a few... Jeff is the city planner. We know it's Jeff, but it's the city planner. After talking to a few residents, business owners, it's a few concerns about parking. I brought those concerns to Mr. Nedman, the DPW director. I talked to the city planner to see what we can do and resolve some of those issues. I don't know how you want to deal with this, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if you want to take one individual street separately. Probably that will be easier.
Yeah, that'd be great. I prefer that. Unless, Councilor Derby, do you have any objections to that?
Because Mr. Patel, he is here. I want to start with Adams Street. We know the... One of his businesses moved from the corner to the other, to another building. In the past, the city been installing 15-minute parking for some businesses. Where people can go in instead of having the car parked there for an hour or two. I think this is one of those opportunities that we can set up that again, that people can move constantly in front of the business. And after, I did my proposal, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry. Thing was, I said that 10 to 6, I think after 6:00 PM, people should park more than one hour. But I think 10 to 6 will be pretty much reasonable for the business to have 15-minute parking there. It's a situation in the east side of the road. Right now, it's no existing parking for 200 feet. I think we should change that. I don't see why. Maybe that was because there was a business there before. I don't see the reason why we should keep it 200. I think we should do as a curve cut. Like everybody else in the city, like I think it's 15 feet. We should be doing the 200 and allowing parking in that section. Because right now, it's no parking zone in that area. People are parking it, and we're pretty sure we're not enforcing it because we need that parking. And it's, people are not doing anything bad. It's not affecting anyone. Not saying anyone, not bad, but it's not affecting anyone. That's I'm pretty sure the city is not doing with it, nothing with it. So I think we should change that, no parking, to allow people to park one or two minutes. Whatever the committee decide, it will be the best for the area. But that's what I have for Adams Street. Jeff, you want to add something before?
I think it, I would say that I think the 15-minute, the two 15-minute spaces make sense. And then I think just clarifying, I think the goal is to clarify what can happen on Adams Street. And just for one more example on, so the map was on the Westerly side. As you're coming down Adams towards Codder Street, there's one leftover sign that says no parking this side of the road. But in the regulations, it's allowed to park there. So we would want to just confirm what is allowed and then clean up the signs. Because that area is really good parking for access to downtown. Making it clear for people as to where they can park is always a good strategy.
Councilor Derby, you have any questions? So I just need to clarify because it might, I'm trying to see on the... So which side of the street is the store on? Is it Westerly or East Hilly?
Westerly.
Okay.
Yeah, this map has...
You have it right there. You have a map there.
Oh, I do. I'm sorry. I was looking on the computer. Thank you very much for providing that. So...
Get me that one.
Okay.
And here is this door.
Okay.
So I'll put up this door.
Okay. So... Couple, couple questions. The two 15-minute parking spaces are on which side?
West. Westerly.
Okay. I'm sure this might be written here, but I'm just, oh, there.
Yes, right there.
Okay. And then, oh, it is there, right there. Thank you. I guess any other question for anybody? Any reason, why, like, why two? Is that a standard we've set from private precedent? Do you want, is there a reason not to have more?
Three, four?
If you are the business owner, probably here 1-6. I think, and I just joke. I think with the nature of 15-minute parking, people should be in and out. That's why I, me, I consider two enough.
Okay.
Maybe three, four, whatever this committee will decide, that will be okay. I don't, I don't think we should have four, five parking spot there where people should be moving in and out. I think that's what I recommend it to.
Okay.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
So next to, the property next to where the two proposed 15-minute spaces are, who owns that?
Is that...
This one right here?
Is that...
The 49? I mean...
Yeah, I think so.
So that's mine.
Okay.
The small, it's a house?
It's a house.
Oh, that's a house, yeah.
Yeah.
They have, they have a driveway, right?
So they have a, like, big driveway. So anyway, just city just did like a stripe, yellow stripes, so zebra.
Correct. Yeah. You see, just that, that way people don't park in front of their driveway.
And this is, I think, everything start from that neighbor. I don't know why suddenly, but all those years, people parking on both sides. That is no problem. Somehow, the neighbors start complaining. And there is a small sign that says no parking on this side.
Correct. Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't putting 15-minute spaces in front of somebody else's.
No, no, no. And that's, that's why DPW already marked that area so people cannot park in front of the driveway.
Okay. So it also looks like, probably based on my mind's eye too, you probably can't fit more than a couple spaces in front of the storefront anyhow.
I think there is a clear space for three, that's more.
You think will be enough for three?
Yeah, a place. Because from that driveway to up to the getting into the My Other Parking Lot, there is, there is a more.
So we don't...
But the other thing is we don't have to leave us some space, right? If this is a parking space for the new building and this is the road, we supposed to leave some space here too, right?
Yeah, I think there's, you know, there's maybe a potential to try to approve this tonight. But there could be a couple things that could be helpful as some measurements. And then I think that there in, in the traffic rules and orders, there is something of a setback from corners of streets. But I don't know if it's on, I don't know if it's driveway.
So, yeah, because I'd like to do this right, both in the interest of the city and the business owner. So I think that we should measure that.
I believe it's 20.
Okay. Mr. Patel, in any given 15-minute span within the store, do you know roughly how many customers might be in there?
I mean, during the Monday to Thursday, it's just hardly like three, four customer in and out. The other thing I just heard what you said, Friday and Saturday, the 6 o'clock time limit, I don't know, that's gonna be even tough. Because once it's like, whatever the time, 6 o'clock and, you know, like 6 o'clock and, and Friday and Saturday, we might be busy until 6 to at least 9. But I don't want to push you all the way 9 or 10 o'clock because we close 11 o'clock. And every corner of the city have a different business, right? If you go on South Street and Main Street, there the other packet store and Smithy Packet Store, which is in Southampton, even Friday, Saturday, after 6 o'clock, there is nobody there. In a small town, if you come in this corner, it's busy. Somehow, that corner, other side on South and Main Street is busy during the daytime. And Jim Packet Store, you don't have nobody here right now on Friday, Saturday, before 3, 4 o'clock. As soon as hit like 5, 6 o'clock, because of the bar and restaurants, people start coming more often evening times. And this is kind of the downtown over there, it's different. So if somebody might be select, well, Packet Store in East Hampton, it's same thing, yes. But it's depend on where is the Packet Store. I think Jim, Union, that's two are more busy in evening time. The Pleasant Street Variety, Jerry's Variety, Valley Farm, Old Colony, all these packet stores or BLNY, they are done by like 5, 6 o'clock. They don't have much business, even on, even on Friday and Saturday.
Well...
So there is a couple things. One is like X-Lab or More Parking might be helping. That's not only for the Packet Store. Tell somebody, anybody can park over there for 15 minutes. And even 15 minutes rules, it's really not 15 minutes. We have like, used to be Jerry's have a 15-minute parking. So people park for a long time and say like, wow, he's like one more than hour. Now, okay, now you have to recall 911 or police department. Some police officer have to be come down there, watch for the 15 minutes, and then they start the 15 minutes. It's not like they park from 12 o'clock. Well, I have a camera, he parked 12 o'clock, and I call you 1:00. Doesn't matter. I have to be see that. So it's, it's good for the My Business, yes. But it's good for the some other people too. I think across the street, I think the coffee place, some bakery, small bakery coming, in Old Mantices, I think, I thought. So that's good for them too.
So a couple thoughts. I mean, the first is that I think we have to obviously balance the greater, the broader needs of the city with the needs of the individual business. I think that spaces directly in front of your business should be, we should lean more towards your business. And spaces across the street, down the street, that should be some sort of a balance in terms of just what's generally fair and needed. I think two to three spaces or whatever that frontage will accommodate, we should go figure that out. Because I, I think we should maximize what's available for the business owner. And then the question is, you know, is 8 o'clock a big deal for three spaces? Does that really get in the way of what we're anticipating would be being friendly towards the dinner rush? So I guess I'll open that, that up to the, to the, to the committee. Does anyone have an issue with maybe pushing it closer to 8 o'clock?
I don't have an issue. I just throw the hours just to start the conversation.
Yeah. No, I know. I just, that's how we always do it. So I think I'd be interested to see how many spaces we could fit there within the confines of, of what's fair or what's...
And there will be for the hours to be consistent, probably 8 to 8, AM to 8 PM, 12 hours of 15 minutes?
Yeah.
To be consistent.
Curious what the planner thinks.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking that way. See if he say no.
And yeah, that's, if you want to put 10 to 8, that's fine too because we open 9:00. First hour or so, you know, it's in the morning, in a, in a nice town in East Hampton, you don't have a customer until almost 12:00, kind of.
The, when you look at the parking rules and orders, there's a whole, there's a 15-minute section. And coincidentally, the next, we're talking about Chapel Street. It was set up probably for Maple Street School. So we want to try one on, we're talking about removing that ironically. But that one was, that one said 8 AM to 3:30 PM, September 1st to June 30th. Right? That was very specific. Right? So I think it shows that you, it has been done.
We had that.
Right above that though, just for, just for transparency, there's a parking time limited on certain streets. And that's the header of the section. And it says, "No person shall park or allow a vehicle to remain standing upon following streets or portions of the streets for a longer period of time than is herein specified." But then it says, "These restrictions apply and be in effect at all times between 7 and 6, 7 AM and 6 PM." But then Chapel Street is demonstrating that you could tailor it, you could change it. So I don't think there's anything that prevents you from picking a time slot that works. That's the way I would read it, it's pretty flexible before.
Doesn't, I mean, I don't think it, I don't think we would have to do 8 to 8. I think we could do 10 to 8 or, you know, if it's, if it doesn't get busy, like, what's the point of having it when it's not going to be needed? I think we want to, we want to try to maximize the, the use of those spaces during business hours. So, I mean, that's...
I'm not being too...
Two cents.
So let's say 10 to 8 and then figure out what, how many spaces we could fit there.
All right.
Yeah.
And then regarding, go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. I will do the measuring, I don't know if, I will do Greg. I can go with Greg.
Yeah. It should work pretty well because there's a new driveway entrance for the new building. And then there's the driveway. So just under, because I think, off the top of my head, I would think that, I think, I think for a parallel parking space, you want 20 feet. Because that gives you the, the ability to back in maneuver and come back out. So I think 20 feet is the length you want. So if you can get three in that distance, that would be, that's still my question.
Well, right. I mean, here's my question is, we're just looking at, we're just looking at curb frontage. So do we even have to determine how many spaces it is if we say from here to here? I mean, do you, do you want to mark spaces in front of the business? Are there guys...
Worried if we can mark them. I agree, I think. Because we have, we have had a discussion about marking some of those other spaces on...
Sure. Okay. Then we should mark, okay. Yep. Okay. That's fine. I just want to, okay. And then, um... Yes?
Before the next meeting, I will go with Greg and make the measurement to be sure how many parking spot we can have there.
Okay. Okay. And then, okay. Any other comments specifically about the 15-minute slots?
Just want to be sure 10 to 8 and just to measure to how many spot we can get there.
I think that's reasonable. Everyone else have to do consensus with that. Well, if there are the minutes.
So that's, that's what we have on Codder Street, 20 feet for the every parking spot?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
I might, I might be wrong, but it looked to me as 20 feet is... But again, you might be right. You know more, but I'm saying like, on Codder Street, I mean, it's parallel parking all the way in the street or every street actually.
We can, we should double check.
Double check, yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm just saying.
Measuring a couple of the spaces on Codder Street to fact-check me would be good. And then whatever that mention is.
I mean, I'm going from here to measure, I have a tap in my car. I'm going to measure and I do measure my front two. So, but yeah, we'll double check, yes.
Okay. And then those no parking, the two no parkings, we're taking, then we want to take that out. Is that, is that the request? Within the confines of what other, what other ordinance has already stayed in terms of how close you could park to a street? Is that...
Yes.
Yes?
Generally 16 to 18 feet.
Okay. Is that the, Mr. Planner, is that...
Did it be called 18?
16 to 18 feet.
Typical maybe 18 feet or maybe, maybe overshot.
But 2 feet.
That's a, that's a good number. So we just want, and the other request is to just remove the no parking on Adams that is currently listed.
Let me go back. Jeff, if you can remember, because I will find my notes.
I think the map, what I, what I, whatever all helping with the map was the existing. Where it says existing is that that was in the regulations today.
Okay.
The 70 feet on the west side, so right when you turn onto Adams, I, I would imagine it's because the building was there, so it's a fire department. But we, if we are going to come back with a final proposal, then we should double check that. That would be a good conversation with the DPW director. Because on the, on the Esterly side, when you first get onto Adams, that's where it shows a 200-foot no parking zone. You know, if, if there's a 20-foot requirement right at the intersection, and then you could park a few more cars before you get to, there's another driveway to the back of that building. So just, that could be why it just got drawn up 200 feet there. But I think as Councilor Gomez said, there, people are parking there. So we want to try and figure out.
Yeah, if we could just figure out what, where we wanted to start it to start, or how far we actually want to be, I think that would be helpful. We could just really redesign that entire...
And I can do that with Greg, too.
Wonderful. Okay. Any other, are we all clear about Adams Street? Any other comments, questions?
Can we do it?
Okay. Mr. Patel, do you have any more comments?
No. I have one second. Thanks for your help, yeah.
And I will let you know when we're going to have the next meeting.
Okay, let me know.
I'll try to get that ASAP. It's coming, okay?
See you next week.
Yeah. Let's talk about your kind of streets, I think. Sorry.
You talking about Codder Street? This is final, come on.
Yeah. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can see it.
Here's a question, just being sensitive to meetings. How time-sensitive is this? Because...
I think as soon, the sooner better.
Yeah, so...
I'm going to tell you one, Mr. Chairman, is because right now, and I'm glad the, the police department in the city is being flexible with the people who are parking in Adams Street. But right now, the police won't, they can't give a ticket.
Right.
And we want to avoid that because we want to be friendly with the people who's coming to support our businesses. So I think as soon as it better, then we can move forward and fix this, the parking zoning law that we have in Adams Street.
And that's what I'm getting at. So we have a meeting on, we have a meeting on July 5th, and then we have a meeting in August. And ultimately, what I'd like, like to somehow see is we could have this public hearing in August. Now, that means, I don't think we can meet before July, but I think that we're, are we close enough that we could at least set the meeting? Do we have to have a finalized proposal to at least set the meeting?
To set the public hearing?
Yeah, to set the public hearing for August.
If the committee decide to schedule a hearing in August, that's fine.
Okay. I mean, we do this with, with, you know, variety of things all the time where things aren't finalized. So I, and I'd be comfortable with that. And I think that we preferential in terms of being friendly to this issue. So...
Thank you.
Do you, are you amenable to that? Okay. I mean, potentially could deal with all this stuff. I just, we'll have to find a time to meet in July and shore things up.
Yeah.
Okay. And then we could just send the language to Barbara, then we'll be in the public record.
Perfect.
Okay.
Sound good, thank you.
All right. Any other things about Adams?
No.
Okay. So in no specific order, do you want to talk about, I guess, driven to proximity, you want to talk about Chapel next?
Yes, I think that's super simple.
Okay.
Right now is because the, like Mr. Back said, the regulation now that we have is 15-minute parking from, from 8 to 3:30, September 1st to June 30th, and is provisional parking in the east side of the road for 200 feet, from 8 to 3:30 between September 2. So we should really remove that because it's not, it's not necessary because the school is not there anymore. I think the people will be allowed to park for more than 15 minutes if they want to. So basically, it's striking the limo shop of the zoning for parking there.
Okay. And you're saying an hour both sides?
Yeah.
Just in, in, all day?
Correct.
Only 90 minutes.
Yeah. That sounds reasonable. And you would repaint those crosswalks?
I put in proposal to remove the crosswalks.
Oh, okay.
They don't...
Oh, I see.
They don't need it.
They don't serve any purpose anymore. They used to be for bus, kids and buses. And the one, the one else, the really important one, I think, to remove is the one that's really right, the one right in front of Maple. And I think people, sorry, is it okay if I...
Yeah, Mr. Back.
I think anecdotally, people are ignoring the signs. But people are obeying that crosswalk. And that could be a parking space. I mean, I think it's re, it's really just messing up the way people park on that street. I think people are obeying the crosswalk. They're ignoring the signs. But if we just clean that up, I think, you know, the redevelopment of the schools is probably, you know, at best, like, four years from shoveling around. So we want to have this available for people.
We took that from me. I was going to say like, it's going to be a long way, you know, till we see residents living in that building.
Right.
And then eventually, in four, five, six years, we would have to review it. We should review it by then, but now it's not necessary there. No need it.
Yeah, you just need crosswalks on both ends, I think.
Right.
And that's it. Yeah. Okay. I mean, this seems pretty straightforward to me. Councilor Derby, any comments? Okay. I, I don't have an issue with that as long as everyone knows.
I mean, if you want, Mr. Chairman, this meeting is okay to having the conversation of what we want. And the next meeting, I will bring all the motions to remove this language and to add the other language there so we can do all this at the same time.
That would be great, yeah. Because we probably want to see exactly what's going to, what it's going to look like in the hearing. Okay. On to School Street.
So School Street, I disagree with Mr. Back in one thing, but that's fine. I don't think we should do one way.
Okay.
Why? Right? Why is, I mean, this is, this is no part of baggage group. It was a proposal first to do one way. After, like, my, boy, you guys know, I live really near to the area. After having a conversation with Mr. Back, I saw that there was an accident and something else happened. And they use that road more than they used to. And they need, they need a both way because what happened in the city with so many construction. So I see that problematic. If that happen again, they can have it. Accident happens almost every day. And the amount of the construction that we have, having the road only one way, I don't think for me will be necessary this time. Probably in the future, but with the amount of construction that we have, I don't, I don't see that. So and the other proposal is removing the, the crosswalk that is there. Could be temporary too. And allowing one hour parking on the north northly side between Union and Clark Avenue. Because during the construction hours, we're losing parking. And I think that would be good for the community and business to for the for the community to park and keep supporting businesses in in Union Street. I think there is a window there that we can create some extra parking and in the duration of the Union Street project. I I don't know in the future, we need those parkings. Could be something temporary until the end of the construction, or if the committee decide to keep parking there, I don't know. I don't think that we need it in the future, but whatever, if the if the committee decide to keep that permanently, so typically. But I think I think with the construction that we have now in Union Street is is really needed. You want to add something?
I wholeheartedly support it. I think it's the same thing where I when you first pull in off, when you pull off of Union Street on the School Street, there's a no parking sign on the northly side. And I think most people are obeying that, and they're driving all the way past the entrance to there's a Clark Avenue, and then and then you can finally park after that street. I don't, you know, we're not talking about a huge number of spaces, but even five would be five more than we have right now. There is a driveway at the back of that building, so we have to be mindful of that section, but it would be great because it's close to Union Street, and we want to support. And Omar and I talked about the there's a couple businesses right there that are gonna they're kind of relying on street parking. And if we take it away during construction.
Yeah, makes total sense. I I would also be cautious about changing a two-way street right now until Union's done. I know that's been a prior conversation. So, yeah, I don't I don't have any reservations, Counselor Derby?
Fine.
Okay. So I think that we need, if 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 you can, yes, Counselor Gobes?
Probably this is a question for you. Do we need to know exactly how many parking spot we need there to make a motion or just to between here to there, it couldn't be allowed parking for whatever?
Right.
That's what we need for the motion?
Right, I think in this case, I think just on the northly side is fine. I would, if you are gonna go on the Greg, I think we should double check whether the first twenty feet we pull off of Union onto School Street, if that first twenty feet would get marked off in yellow, and then sorry, so that was my line.
All right. Yeah, so I think, yes.
No, thank you, I'm good.
Yeah, so I think our goal then is to just solidify exactly the.
Hi. Hi.
This is Public Safety, is that what you're here for?
Yes.
Just to solidify the the specifics of the language as well as the the infrastructural layout, and we'll we'll figure out a meeting at the at the end of this one, if that works well. Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Any other comments about that? So moving along. We have the traffic mitigation brought forward by Counselor Derby at the intersection of Cottage Chapel, Clark, Holyoke Street. And are there any members of the public here that just want to speak about that at all? Okay, Counselor Derby?
Yeah, so I I brought this forward because as Cottage Street is seeing more pedestrian traffic, more businesses. It seems like seven days a week Cottage Street is full. And I have observed multiple times the crosswalk which is in front of Nene's. I, with cars exiting Cottage Street, making the turn to go onto Holyoke Street, and with cars coming from Holyoke Street, making the turn onto Cottage Street, are traveling at a high rate of speed on both directions. And it's causing a pretty hazardous situation for pedestrians in that crosswalk. And I think with the complication of that intersection, I feel like it makes sense for us to bring in the stakeholders and and try to at least come up with a preliminary recommendation for what could be done. So the reason why I wasn't specific is because I am not a traffic expert. And I don't know if, you know, a speed table or if speed bumps on either side or, you know, a bigger thing that maybe I don't know about, for example, like looking at that whole wide big intersection and putting in a rotary there or something that would slow traffic down and kind of redirect people. So, you know, I I don't think.
Talking about.
I'm talking about right there.
This right here.
Yep.
Right here, right?
Yeah, and and even. It's I mean, it's it's almost a bow tie. So if you look at it, it's almost a bow tie. And really, the the left part of the bow tie where you have Nene's, you have the convenience store and the entrance to the Maple School is probably one of the most complicated pieces, I think. Clark Street and what is that Cherry Street that comes in?
Stone Path?
It is very complicated there.
It's a little, I will, I think, I don't know where Annette is. I was hoping Annette would come because Annette is our expert on that intersection. You know, but I do I do want to at least have some sort of movement on this because it's kind of inevitable that someone's gonna be coming into town not stop for someone in the stop block in the crosswalk. And and that's that's the biggest issue is people are going thirty-five down Holyoke Street, which means they're going forty-five. Which means some of them are going fifty-five. And they're taking that corner hot, and some of those vehicles are eighteen wheelers. So. You know, I don't think this is anything that we're gonna solve tonight, but what I would like to do is to, you know, invite the police chief, to invite the DPW director, Nedman, and, you know, look at the intersection with the eye towards how can we improve pedestrian safety specifically from the vehicles that are coming in and out of East Hampton? So.
Yeah, so I mean, just to start, obviously grateful that you brought this forward. I agree with everything you've been saying. I've been looking at this intersection myself. It's very complicated between Cottage Chapel, Holyoke, Clark, Stone Path, and you have Pine coming up too. You know, we we just we just did Cottage, as you know, and we're about to do Holyoke Street. The I I spoke to the DPW director a little bit. This would obviously involve some sort of study. We'd have to come up with funds for the study. I'm not telling anything you don't know. And then we'd have to come up with funds if we wanted to move forward, then we have to come up with funds to move forward. The good news is that with Holyoke being paved, Holyoke Street being paved, there could be a possibility at the end of Holyoke where where the seam goes into Cottage of putting some mitigation there. He had mentioned a possible speed table.
Yes, that's perfect.
I mean, I agree. I think that the we've missed an opportunity. I think the crosswalk at Nene's should be a raised crosswalk. You have that flashing crosswalk, and I think that you come around that corner, and sometimes if it's flashing, it's too late. I was I've wondered if you could have a if that could activate something farther up Holyoke Street that says when flashing pedestrians and crosswalk. So I share all of your thoughts.
And I think and I think that could be, you know, another thing is that crosswalk doesn't have any flashing lights. So, you know, that's another piece, I think, that we could explore with Greg.
Yeah, so what I'd like to do is I'd like to bring him into, I mean, there's some sobering numbers that he threw out just in terms of the study, you know, we're talking fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars in the study. I think I'll ask the planner in a second what he thinks. And then, you know, million dollars to do to build something, but I agree with you, and I appreciate you bringing it forward. I mean, as you know, I had mentioned publicly, I'm just cautious about how we frame this in terms of staying within kind of some framework and 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 making sure that the way we discuss it is productive, which I'm not saying it's not, you're not, but yeah. So agree with everything, and Counselor, I'm gonna call him in a second. Counselor Gobes, anything?
I think you said, Counselor, I can? I think that I think we need it. I if we can resolve resolve that problem with, you know, spending a ton of money, it would be the best. But I definitely it's a problem there.
And I have a I have a question for Planner Bag.
Yeah.
Is this is this something that we could potentially, you know, partner with DPW and and look at future Safer's to School stuff that could potentially bring, you know, basically, we're connecting that part of town to this part of town. That is a pretty main artery for kids coming from the Clark Street and those neighborhoods, Holyoke Street neighborhoods. You know, and and that's one of the things is like, are there things that we could leverage potentially? And and if you don't know off the top of your head, that's fine, but having it on your radar, I think, might be good.
Yeah, no, I I appreciate it. I would like to follow along and be part of the discussions with along with Greg. Interestingly, I think that intersection is really complex, and I think when the city was, I was before I was here, but I think when the city was redoing Cottage Street, you brought it like just to that point of what we knew we could do and did it. Similarly, there is a conceptual plan for Maple Street that could be a potential upgrade alongside the conversion of the school to affordable housing. And those consultants also drew kind of a line right before that intersection. So I think I think potentially getting some funds to study it. I think you need survey of the area, and then they can come up with options. I think that is a really good next step. Then comes matching the project funding sources. So Safe Roads might be one of them. The other one that Greg and I and then also the city engineer talked about at the federal level. As a result of the pandemic, there are lots of funds available, and the government has been putting them into these buckets for them to then get distributed. So the one that I think comes up for this and South in Maine is it's a Safe Roads for All. And that program is designed to reduce pedestrian and vehicle driver deaths. That is like, that's the threshold is will your project prevent or or stop a death from occurring? So it's like, you know, it's raising it up a couple notches. And then what I think the city's planning to do is part is gonna go into a joint grant with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. So the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission would apply, and then they would help us evaluate our most problematic intersection.
What was that Greg called?
Safe Roads, Safe Roads for All. So it's a lot like the other grants where it's two steps. You have to do a planning study first. So you have to identify your problem intersections, and then they are prioritized. Then you're eligible for larger pots of money, so in the millions, to actually do the project. So that is something that we've all been watching, like as a result of the pandemic, they're formulating a grant program still. But something like Parsons and Ferry, that intersection, the South in Maine, and I think this one are like really good candidates or something like that. So I think if we set a modest timeline, I think there's a way to to come up with some designs and then go for funding, possibly whenever it's available, so.
Well, so here's a question. I guess it doesn't really have to happen here. I mean, do we need, is it, would it be valuable at all to have those topics introduced into this committee so we could discuss them, or the, I mean, typically, a lot of these things happen, they don't have to, they're not, they're not council-driven necessarily until you get to some form of appropriation. So do you need those to be here, or or does that not matter right now?
I mean, I I think your approach to bring in the chief of police and the DPW director, and I would probably just invite myself.
No, you're you're a key stakeholder.
Follow up on the meeting that you have on your agenda item, and then just be ready for someone to submit an appropriation request for someone to design money.
Yeah, I mean, I obviously, as you know, the you have to get traffic counts from every single one of these streets, and then the complication too, particularly as it pertains to Chapel, is the traffic counts are gonna potentially change once that develops.
Right.
The how that street's used. Now, that doesn't necessarily make a difference because speed mitigation, speed, you know, mitigation's mitigation, but that's just obviously something we have to take. So, so Mr. Bag, then what do you think? What's the next plan then to invite to invite you, the planner, you are the planner, you, the DPW director, and the police chief to the next meeting, that we can hear some ideas and kind of how this, what the next steps would be in terms of moving forward with the study?
Yeah, I think I think that makes sense. While you have it on your agenda to that, and I think if we put our heads together, I think we already have a list. I mean, there's there is short term, there might be some short term.
Yeah.
Opportunities.
Like temporary.
Or even the rapid flashing beacon, so let's say you we have to design, you have to get survey done, and then you you have to pay for them, so you're probably talking fifty or sixty thousand dollars for a set of rapid flashing beacons. But if a bigger project is five years away, you know, that could be worth it. And that might be something the DPW director and police can talk through that.
Okay, I mean, we want to maximize, obviously, how we're spending money and and not, you know, make sure that we're spending wisely if there's something else coming down the road. But, yeah, I think I think I think to build on Counselor Derby's proposal, yeah, we'll just have the stakeholders come in next time and make recommendations of what can be done. I would like in a public meeting to have Director Nedman state whether yes or no, we could potentially do a speed table at the end of Holyoke. So, yeah. Counselor Derby, anything else?
That's all I could ask for, is getting everybody on the same page.
Is there anything more I could do to make you even happier?
Do it now.
You want me to stay out there with the flag?
Go out there with a flashlight everywhere.
No, I totally agree with you. I mean, I hope you understand that my hesitation is just like, would how this all works within the confines of at least from my perception, what we do in committee and how to figure out how to make it work. Well, I'll be respectful, obviously, to your, you know, your your drive in this agenda item, so.
Absolutely. Well, and I think, you know, one other thing, the the reason why I I felt it was important to bring this forward is because there are measures that can be taken in in between tangible things, like, for example, Chief Alberti might be like, hey, listen, I will put an officer at the triangle, and we will do speed checks on Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights. And, you know, just like little things like that to get it on the radar, to make sure that all the stakeholders are aware and on the same page, and that we are looking forward to say what potential, we know this is a a dangerous spot. What potential funding sources do we have? And with that discussion can come, you know, future awareness and future action. Doesn't have to originate from here, but we can at least be the catalyst. And so and I think if we can do that, I'll be happy.
Well, I mean, this goes back to sort of the conversation with the with an item we just took off, but, you know, for instance, I would a hundred percent support, and it would be ultimately the director would have to put a request, and the mayor would have to approve it, but, you know, should the city, especially given some of these requests, should the city consider investing in some of the removable speed tables so that for these areas that we are starting to identify may need these kinds of mitigation, we can have DPW roll out where you say, okay, we're gonna deploy this and see how it works. But obviously, there should be, there needs to be study before that. I mean, everyone wants speed bumps, as you know.
Yeah.
But with 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 properly professionally identified locations, you know, I would support it. I mean, I don't know, I mean, they're not super expensive, you know, in the ultimate scheme of things. I mean, that would be something I would completely support Greg in doing.
Me too, and I think when we get, you know, Director Nedman in, would it make sense to invite the engineer?
Yes, I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so engineers, Nedman, Alberti, Bag, I don't see how fire needs to be involved, but I can.
The only thing is if we were gonna roll out, you know, portable speed bumps to make sure that they were compatible. I remember the ones that we saw were compatible
Yeah.
with the emergency vehicles, that we would just want to make sure ambulances can get over them without, you know, jolting people in the back.
Okay. Anything else on that topic?
Nope. Thank you for entertaining.
Oh, I mean, I think it's great. Okay, so this, so the resolution. Has everyone read that to some degree? So, you know, I obviously approach this from a very specific perspective and voice. I've had, I'm not shy to say that I've had some experiences within the city, both broadly and more narrowly within my role here, where I've experienced, had experiences that I've either perceived as, or I think directly have been antisemitism. You know, so to with, you know, a person who's a member of the LGBTQ community has experiences, and people of color have experiences, you know, in terms of biases directed at, you know, those minority groups. You know, the ADL reports are completely concerning. There's a there's precipitous rise in, you know, white nationalism, certainly directed against Jewish people. There's a very interesting report that was just issued today that's co-sponsored by both the ADL and GLAD about also, you know, what you would expect to see, some corresponding violence and and hate against the LGBTQ community. And, you know, resolutions like this, this is a spoke of a heat of a piece of a broader issue where the hub is is generally, you know, white nationalist driven hatred, and that reflects in many different ways against many different groups. But in terms of this particular resolution, it's just focusing on one group that has, you know, historically faced persecution, genocide, attempted genocide, murder, expulsion, you know, a variety of other things, both without and within this country. And so the goal is, for me, is And so the goal is, for me, is to just, you know, obviously recognize that, but, and take some real concrete steps within the city to educate residents. You know, one thing we say a lot is in regards to the Holocaust is never again. And we say that because if you keep repeating it, it makes people remember it. The Holocaust was just one piece of, or one of the best known and unfortunately the most successful attempts to eradicate Jews from the world. But that's in the 20th century. If you just, if you start going back through the 19th century pogroms in Europe, the 17th century antisemitism, throughout the entire, from, from the 11th to the 20th century, Jews were expelled from every single major country in Europe. And that's what eventually pretty much drove them to Eastern Europe where three quarters of the world's Jewish population actually resided at the time of the Holocaust. You know, a lot of people don't talk about the Spanish Inquisition and the expulsion from Spain in 1492, which is another huge seminal event. So these are all important things to talk about. It's combating antisemitism is combating forces that are also opposing and persecuting other, other populations. And so it's just, I think it's important to talk about things like the city being more cognizant about the Holocaust. The Holocaust, remember it stayed, we just had Jewish American Heritage Month and it's probably important, just like we recognize Black History Month and we recognize Pride Month, that there's some recognition and discussion about that. This is all to bring awareness as well as to push back against, you know, a darkness that affects a lot of people. So the only real changes I made, someone brought to me, there was a statement in the resolution that talks about George Washington and his statement he made about Jewish people recognized in the land. And, and they had said that they felt that that statement's complicated because George Washington owned slaves and that because of his slave ownership, it could be distracting to start to get into, well, why was, why would he be, make favorable statements about Jewish people that at the same time be a slave owner? And I think that's a very complicated conversation to have and I'd love to have it, but I don't want to have it in the context of this resolution. So I basically just took that out and I changed it with something that basically met the same tone of that statement, which I could pull up. But that was the biggest, that was the only big change I made. And then just in terms of, I've been reaching out, as you know, I've been reaching out to a lot of organizations, obviously, the Jewish Federation of Western Massachusetts, the Anti-Defamation League are both major collaborators on this. There's a number of congregations who wrote in, I think that was in the packet. I'm, it's, it's mostly just trying to coordinate with people, but obviously congregation of Benay Israel and De'Avah in North Hampton want to endorse this. They're just getting their, organizing themselves to write a letter. But the Interfaith Council of Springfield is going to endorse this as well, which I think is, is big. And they were very enthusiastic about that and asked also if they could ask other congregations and folks to do so. So, I mean, I guess I can answer questions or obviously I want your feedback because I mean, from this, this is obvious, I have a much different perspective and lived experience with this than everyone else does. And so, you know, how, what I feel should be done with this and not done with this is going to be different than other people in the council. But I do think it's important and I'll stop here. I'll open it up to the counselors.
I'm supportive.
Okay.
What, um, thank you for bringing this forward. As the one person of four at the council, I know how, how bad it is discrimination. Someone who has a lot of accent, who make a terrible mistake in immigration. I, I know how bad it is for discrimination, really. I know, I know how it is. And I'm happy that you moved just watching from the, from the resolution. And I agree with you, I don't think this is the place that we should discuss that. But I, I'm happy that you recognize that that could be problematic and you will, I think the city, for example, have to be more, have to speak more loud in a way to recognize there's a lot of bad people over there. There's a lot of humans who love to abuse other people. Bringing a resolution like this one will bring aware of how bad was the past, but how bad can be the future? And if we don't talk about those, that we remember the sadness of how many humans been through, I don't think we are doing our part. I, I really appreciate this from your part. I can talk about George, because I'm not George, but I, I can recognize the Jewish community being attacked. None, not any community should be attacked. The Jewish, the Latinos, the Blacks, the LGBTQ, anyone, we should respect anybody. And if this, if we have to do a resolution every, every other meeting to, to let people know that we are not part of that, amen. So I'm more in support of the resolution.
And I love what you said because this isn't, this is about this one group, but it doesn't mean that it's leaving another group out. It just means that this is what we're here, so let's talk about it now. And unfortunately, there's so much hate in the world that we have to focus on. And we have, we've done a lot of great work, I think already for a lot of other groups too, but I completely agree with you. We could just set a schedule for every month to talk about. But, but yeah, I want this to be powerful and I, and I, so I know a lot of times we go in on these in first reading, but I want this to be meaningful. I want us to set concrete goals for what we're going to, at least, I know it's just a ordinance, I mean, a ordinance, it's just a resolution, but what we're going to ask of the schools, what we're going to ask of the mayor, what we're going to ask of other people in the city. And it's an ask, but I want it to be a concrete ask and really follow up on these things. So that's, that's why I'm taking a little while with it. So, any other thoughts? We have a member of the public here, did you want to comment on this at all?
I, I think it is really important for us to, to condemn all sorts of hate and discrimination. I think that it has become all too easy to say that someone who disagrees with you is a white supremacist and to sort of turn that around and there be no actual hate speech, but there being frequently things thrown at people that say, you're a racist, you're that. And I, I think it would be important for us to say we value all points of view, not necessarily in this, because this is very specific and I think you're right, we need not to forget what happened. There were so many, way too many people impacted by the Holocaust in other moments in time. But I think it's become really easy for people to look at individuals that disagree with them and just assume that there's some whack job, white supremacist or something. And I think it's important for us to understand that.
Thank you. And we can't respond because of the rules of public speak, but I appreciate your.
I understand that.
And Mr. Bag, I mean, obviously you didn't have to hang around for this, but since I, I.
I don't have any comments. I appreciate the discussion's good.
Okay, so I'm doing some more work, oh, yes.
Just for the record, name and address.
Sure. My name's Kathy and I'm at 22 Old Drive, East.
So I'm just work, trying to work, I'm not, I'm not in a particular rush, I think, but based on the way, I'm not here for the August meeting. So I was probably thinking that we're not going to get a full vote on this till September, but frankly, I'm trying to gather some stuff anyways, so. But it sounds like there's no broad concern. I did, just to be transparent, I did give this to the CRC chair based on the conversation we had and I wanted their input, mostly because, yes.
Do they go no send a letter with, before we approve it? Like that, I think, I mean, it wasn't that meaningful, we talked about their, what they're supposed to be doing.
Yeah.
And I think if they're going to review it, I think before we approve it out of the council, I think we should get something from them, like a feedback or something.
Sure, yeah.
If you get that, it would be good to put it in the package.
Yeah, I asked her basically for just, for basically this, yeah, the same, yeah.
Okay, okay.
I mean, her comment was, well, you work with experts in the field on this, so I don't know how much we have to add. But I said, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't, I said, it's not going to, you're not setting, you're not, you're not a voting member of the city council, but it's, it's, it's just information. And so I think, yeah, that's good.
If they can send a letter with the resolution is good, or we as a CRC committee recommend these changes, I think that would be valid.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. Thank you. And then I don't think it's purposeful. I think it has to do with the organization too, because at this point I have, I have the two major synagogues in the area, I still haven't been able to get letters from, but I, I have made the effort to reach out to all the churches in the city because I think that this is an issue that crosses faith. And I haven't heard anything back and I think that just has to do with the fact that it's probably that people don't, those organizations might not check and respond to emails strenuously. And so the CRC chair suggested that they might be able to help with that outreach. Because I think that would be really valuable. That's the other thing I'm waiting for is I think that would be helpful to have that kind of, you know, so. Anything else on that? Okay. I'm still kind of going back and forth with the chief about the ordinance review committee stuff. I think we'll be able to settle that soon. I don't think we plan or bag, we don't have anything to talk about on the Mount Tom Trail that, do we, unless you have something you want to chat about?
No, no, we passed the no parking areas and then we haven't done, we haven't advanced much of the other discussion on that yet.
Is that something that you think we need to keep here or do you want me to bring it back when there's potentially more tangible discussion? So I know we talked about like a broad study and.
The city engineer was talking about sidewalk extension.
Okay.
There's a section of sidewalk that ends on East Street, kind of close to the trail, but even that, it's similar to the discussion we already have, is we need to have funds for a survey and then come up with some kind of design even. So I would say that, I'm not saying that it's not important or that we're not going to look at it, but I would say if I take it off your agenda and we'll bring it back as we make some progress.
Okay.
It's just prioritizing all these different projects.
Absolutely.
They're crazy.
Yeah, so I mean, does anyone object to removing it without prejudice, just so it's not, we don't have to consistently recycle it? Okay. And then the out of view school driveway, I talked to both the police chief and the DPW director, he said it's basically a driveway, not a street. And he recommended a 15 mile per hour be posted there, which I don't have an issue with. And do either of you have, either of the members have any concerns?
Yeah. I would say I do. Because we're just setting people up to break the law. There's nobody going to drive 15 miles an hour on that driveway. I mean, if we want to like milk our citizens and set up a speed trap there, we could, we could fund the city. There's, like, I've driven that driveway a thousand times, it's next to my house. Nobody's driving 15 miles an hour on it, it's just not going to happen. It's not, it's not, it's not reasonable.
Okay, okay, point taken. The school zone's 20 miles per hour. Do you want me to be?
Yeah, I mean, I like, and so I think that this is, this is why I thought it was important to discuss this because, you know, while it is a driveway, it is, you know, close, it's like a quarter mile long.
Long driveway.
And, and there's no pedestrians on that. There's no pedestrians at all because there's a pedestrian path that's adjacent. So what I'm, and I, here's, I might sound like, oh, you should be able to drive 15 miles. No. What I'm thinking is like, what is reasonable for a parent who's bringing their kid to school? Like, what is reasonable for us to expect them to be driving? If you, if you're a teacher there, what's a reasonable speed to drive down that's reasonable? And I would say 15 is probably not reasonable.
Okay.
I mean.
Okay.
So.
I'm hearing you.
I think that we might want to just revisit this discussion with maybe some options of, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, but the other question that I have, sorry, but I just want to throw, how we can set up a speed limit when it's just a driveway, it's not a road?
I don't know.
Right, and that's my, that was what I'm wondering too, like, does the DOT have regulations basically saying that, I don't care what you say, it's a driveway and you can't have a speed limit greater than X amount?
Yeah. And if that's true, I mean, like, it's a moot point because if we put signs up, it's a waste of money.
Sure.
Nobody's going to be driving 15 miles an hour on that. That's, that's my, like, that's my point. I'm not, I'm not angry about this, I'm not, I'm just like, part of bureaucracy is doing things that doesn't make sense. That's my issue. And if we put a 15 mile an hour sign there, that doesn't make sense because nobody's going to follow it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. How did this come up in the first place? I think we were just talking about.
Because we were looking at school zones, yeah.
I mean, my opinion would be it's either the same speed limit as the school zone.
Which I think would be fine. People are still going to speed, but.
Or it's 15. And I agree with you too that if someone's, I guess, let me do some research.
Yeah, I mean, you know, because here's the thing, like, we're probably not going to be doing a lot of speed traps on that.
If someone happened to have a driveway.
It would be really bummer to go to school and get a ticket on your way to school for you. But like, I mean, obviously, there's reasonable limits for that section of road. Like, you know, when you are getting, approaching the rotary, it's natural because you're like going up a hill, so it's a little bit limiting. Going down the hill, you probably, once you get close to the school, you should be mitigating your speed for, you know, the crosswalks. But like I said, nobody, there's going to be no bikes riding up and down that road, there's going to be no kids walking on it. I just want to, I just want to, if we're going to do something, I want to do something that makes sense.
I think that, yes, absolutely. Don't do something just for the sake of doing it. So let me inquire further if, again, for instance, it may just be that the speed limit is just a certain speed limit and it doesn't matter, we can't, we can't change it.
And if that's the case, like, we shouldn't.
It is what it is. If someone gets pulled, right, if someone gets pulled over, then someone explains to them.
Like, you're going at an excessive rate of speed.
Right.
For this, you know, and that would make sense. Like, you know, if someone's going, like, I've literally seen someone going 50 miles an hour down that road. You know, so, like, you can get a good amount of speed, that is unreasonable.
I mean, I'd have to look too, I believe, in certain states, if something's unmarked, then it defaults.
City, for Holyoke, it's 25.
Same thing.
And I think, I think actually, across the state of Massachusetts, I think the default's 25. Because I think people thought it was 30.
I just take a look, say 30.
Really? So, but I, I swear to God, I just heard something about the state's default speed limit, that it was a misconception that it was 30 and it was actually 25. And maybe that's just for heavily, it might be like neighborhoods? But I did.
Well, yeah, I mean, to me, to me, it's 20 or 15 and then the question is, do we need to post it? I think you're right. So that's, that's what it really comes down to. And then, so.
Yeah.
I, I'll reach out to.
Yeah, no, that's good. I think, you know, at the end of the day, it probably doesn't make a lot of sense to spend money on speed limit signs if it's, if it's going to be, you know, something that people aren't going to abide by. But again, I, you know, I would love to hear from like Meredith Lees, like, what does she think? Or, and maybe, is Judy April still there? Yep. You know, so like, bring the principals.
Yeah, I'll try to.
What's your thought on this?
I'll try to reach them.
I mean, if they're like, we want it 15.
Sure.
You know, I, hey, I don't mind saying anything, I don't think people would.
Yeah, and I was supposed to do that, I apologize. You mentioned it last time, I think I.
Summer, we're supposed to be on summer break right now.
Yeah. All right, let me, let me do some more research. Okay. Anything else then?
Oh, God, I wasn't taking notes that whole time.
Well, I think you could probably remember what we just, I mean.
I'll try.
I think you could summarize what just happened pretty well, I trust you.
Yeah.
We don't have anything else on our agenda unless anyone has any comments about anything we discussed.
I still call it Whitebrook, I gotta call it Mountain View School. I don't have anything.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Counselor Derby, Counselor Gomez, a second from Counselor Derby. Council Gomez has a second from Council Derby, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned at 7:10.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.